We have.
I'm good, thanks.
We have people joining, including. Oh, sorry, did I? I think I didn't reach you off the agenda, but the first, the first, the first item we have, Atara Marvalis from Montgomery County Planning, who has graciously joined us this evening to share a little bit about the Friendship Heights urban study. And I, Atara sent me also, so I, I sent you all just a short message, giving you a brief overview of it. But I also threw in the folder on Google as well, Atara's presentation as well. And Atara, thank you. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, you totally are. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for joining us. And let me know if you have any trouble sharing on, on your screen or anything, but sorry for the slight delay in getting started, but thank, thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. There we go. Everyone should be able to see that.
Yep.
Great. So thank you very much for allowing us to present here tonight. I am here as a master planner from Montgomery Planning, County Planning Department, which I'll talk about in a second. I am here with two colleagues tonight. I'm joined by Elsa Heisel McCoy, who's the chief of our Down County Planning Division. So that's the division that plans things inside the Beltway, which includes Friendship Heights, of course, and also the urban designer on the project, Tyler Mylum. So they're on the call as well. So we're here to share a summary of our findings for a project we've been working on for the last six months or so called the Friendship Heights Urban Design Study. We're sharing this presentation with community groups in and around Friendship Heights, just like this one, over the next few weeks. And then we take this to our own planning board in mid-February, and I'll get into the Montgomery Planning introduction in a second for those who aren't familiar with the agency. So this presentation will first go through an introduction, both to the planning department and what we do, and to the goals for this study that we identified when we started, and the sort of what the study area is. And then I'll talk through the engagement process that we went through and talk about the analysis and engagement around four urban design frameworks that we looked at inside Friendship Heights. And when we talk about Friendship Heights, we'll show you a map, but we're talking about the downtown. And then we'll talk about some lessons learned overall. So before we jump into, you know, what this study is about, since it's our first time meeting with the town of Somerset, I'll explain who Montgomery Planning is, in case people don't know, and what we do. So we are the county's planning agency, but we are sort of unusually part of a bi-county entity called the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, or MNCPCC, or Park and Planning, as we have been known over the years. And the commission includes the park and planning departments for both Montgomery and Prince George's Counties. In Montgomery County, our department work can be summarized into three categories. We develop master plans, and those could be countywide, or they could be focused on one specific area of the county. We review development applications. I think most people know us for that, right? If you're going to develop something new, you have to come through our approval process most of the time. And then we conduct studies on various issues, and this is probably less well-known, typically to help public officials, either in our own department or elsewhere, plan for Montgomery County's future. Now, we have, in this map here, you can see that we're split into sort of geographic areas. And so that purple sliver at the bottom that wraps around DC, that's Down County. That's the division we're from. So my colleagues and I in the Down County Division, we do all of the master planning for all of the areas. It's basically north of DC and south of the Beltway. So that's everything from Silver Spring to Combe Park on the east side, to Bethesda and Chevy Chase on the west side. So while we do have some groups in the department that will work throughout the county, right? We work only in that area, as I just said. And, you know, here's a list of examples of studies that have been done from different groups in our department over the last few years. And a lot of them are about one particular topic. Some of them are about a particular topic that applies everywhere in the county, like housing for older adults. And some of them are specific to certain areas of the county, like looking at agritourism in what we call the agricultural reserve in up county, and then more northern part of the county, or looking at Wheaton, in a Wheaton Downtown study. So something that we do quite often, but I think the studies are shorter in scope and less well-known, I would say, than the master plans that we do. Studies can be technical, or they can be more wide-ranging. And one thing that's important to all studies is that they don't actually recommend changes to zoning, and they don't actually change any master or sector plans, but they actually are usually done to explore something, and then they inform sometimes a master or a sector plan, or some other kind of zoning effort that comes later. And so there's sort of, it can be exploratory in a way, or they can be more sort of looking at a really technical issue. But either way, the studies themselves don't make recommendations to change things. They're really just, you know, so we can learn more about a particular topic that can inform future action. And that applies to this study as well. So we're calling it Urban Design Study for Friendship Heights.
Sorry to interrupt. I had my hand raised. I apologize to interrupt your flow. Just one slide back. How do you decide what to study? Even, even though they are exploratory, how do you determine that this is, these are the studies you will undertake?
Sure. So topics get put on our work plan in a variety of ways. Sometimes the planning, so we, we work for the planning board in many ways, although we have a planning department. The board is the five-member group that sits at the head of the planning department and makes the, any kind of, you know, anything we bring forward to them that they, sometimes they can just approve it on their own, like development applications for things like master and sector plans. They have to take action, send it to the county council. But they're sort of the, the government body, if you will, of the planning department, right? So sometimes the planning department, the planning board will say, we would like staff to study something, you know, and it gets put on our list of things, and then it gets handed to whichever group makes the most sense. And with studies, that's typically how it is. With master and sector plans, it's a little more rigid in the sense that there is a general rotation every 20 or 25, sometimes 30 years. We take a place that hasn't been planned in that long, and we start looking at it again. Mostly things like that. But in the end, the county council has to approve the work plan, and it's a negotiation with the planning board and the council. The staff is not, we get to suggest things, but we don't get to pick the work plan. And so in these, for studies like this, it's often that there's been either a trend or something that has happened in the county, and we're thinking, oh, we really want to learn more about that, or sometimes an area that we haven't opened a sector plan in in a while, and we're not sure if enough things have changed to merit that. And then we might do a study to figure out, well, how, what is this area like now? Does it merit future planning? So a lot of times we do it in that, and that, planning studies can come up in a really variety of ways. They're kind of the most flexible thing we have that we work on. You know, most other things come to us, and we have to review them, or they're part of a sort of methodical way of looking at planning in the county. And the studies are the more flexible. And also, you know, the, the scope can be more flexible, and we can define it widely or more narrowly, depending on what we're being asked to look at. I hope that helps to answer the question.
Thank you.
Sure. So what's urban design? I think that's the question we want to answer here for everyone, is, you know, why study you know, urban design in Friendship Heights? And what is urban design anyway? And why look at that in particular in a study? So urban design is the shaping of the physical form of a place, such that the buildings, streets, parks, and public spaces work together to create a dynamic, welcoming place that supports a thriving public life. And successful urban design creates a strong public realm. Public realm is a space or built environment that is open and accessible for public use. So this means anywhere in, usually it can be in any area, urban or suburban, but the places that are open to the public, regardless of ownership. So the streets and sidewalks, but also plazas, parks, other open spaces that are publicly accessible, regardless of who owns them. And one of the reasons that we want to study this here is that usually a a successful public realm really has a lot to do with how successful an urban, an urban environment is. And, and it's the first time we're coming to Friendship Heights from a planning perspective in over 20 years. The last sector plan was done in 1998. And some things, you know, at first glance, Friendship Heights does not look very different than it did in 1998. So the question of what's, how is Friendship Heights today? However, it's sort of its role in the region seems to have shifted a bit. And so we wanted to start our work in Friendship Heights with a study that looks at urban design, trying to understand our, where, how are the bones, right, of this urban area, right? How are they, how are they, are, are they designed in a way that supports a strong public realm? What's, what's going on here? And sometimes, you know, urban design can be so important, and we've seen this in the other urban areas of the county, really important to the success of those urban areas. And we've got to focus on that more and more when we study and work on those areas. And so that's sort of what led us to start this study here in Friendship Heights. The goals of the study, and we had a scope of work for this that we've outlined in July to the planning board. The goal of the study is to analyze how people experience the existing open spaces, pedestrian network, transit network, activity centers, and public life in Friendship Heights today. We had a lot of community engagement in the fall of 2023, and I'll go over that in this presentation, which included regular coordination with both municipalities in and outside Friendship Heights. And we're really glad to finally be here. We've been, you know, hoping to talk to Somerset all this time, residents and stakeholders. This study highlights the urban design strengths and needs of this cross-jurisdictional, unique, transit-oriented community. So this map shows what we call the study area and the context. You guys all know where Friendship Heights in the region, so I don't have to go over that part here. But this map on the left shows the Friendship Heights Downtown. The black dash dot line that goes around here, that's the 1998 sector plan boundary. That's our, that's the sector plan in effect today for Friendship Heights. So we focused our study on this area, but we also did take a look at the surrounding communities, including Somerset. And we spent some time walking around in those surrounding communities, just getting a feel for what those communities are like, and what the transition is like between Friendship Heights and those surrounding communities. We went down Wisconsin a few blocks into DC to understand what that relationship is like. You know, Friendship Heights is kind of a unique, in a unique environment, sort of situated in a unique way. And so those were, that's kind of the way, you know, the way we looked at this in terms of a context for the study. To give you all a sense of the schedule, so we did start this study in July, and we took this scope of work, just finding what I just described to the planning board. Then we started our urban design analysis and started preparing for our engagement. We did analysis from the summer all the way through, pretty much wrapping up in late fall of 2023. During the September to November, we did the bulk of our public engagement. And we had a bunch of, and I'll talk what we had in a minute, but we had sort of different kinds of events, including an online questionnaire. And now we're presenting to different community groups, planning what we found. Plan to go to the planning board in mid-February, right now. And then we hope to have a final report online, and I'm hopefully saying March. And as with all the studies we do, we will send it to the county council, just for information only. And if they ask for a briefing, we'll provide one. But there's nothing to sort of, it's just, it's findings and observations. So there's nothing for us to say, we want to make this change. Can you approve something that's not in the study? So it's more informational, both for the planning board and for the county council. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the engagement that we did. We did sort of two levels of engagement. Hearing from stakeholders was such a major part of this study, because one of the things we want to understand is people's experience of Friendship Heights. We worked with an engagement consultant called Brick and Story out of DC. They were already familiar with the area, because they've worked with the DC Office of Planning on recently published draft Wisconsin Avenue Development Framework Plan. Not sure if anyone here was aware about, about that effort, but it is interesting, and it talks about Wisconsin going down from Montgomery County all the way to Townley Town. We did two large open house engagement events on the October 24th and October 30th, in two different locations in Friendship Heights. We had around 75 participants. I think we had boards up around the room where we asked questions, both about people's identity to Friendship Heights, and I'll talk about that one in a minute, but also about people's experiences with specifically elements of the public realm in Friendship Heights. There were stickers to put up, there were post-it notes to scribble on. And we did that. We also had an online questionnaire that pretty much mirrored the questions from those open house events, and that was up for six weeks and got about 140 responses or so. We took tables at some community events. We did little pop-ups around the neighborhood where we'd open a table in front of Whole Foods for lunch, for example, and tell people about the study and see if they'll take the questionnaire. And then we also went to a lot of community groups like this in and around Friendship Heights in the surrounding neighborhoods.
So. Sir, can we, can you take questions?
Sure.
Okay, so first, I, I want to thank you so much for the presentation. So I've been concerned from the beginning about the dissemination of information to our residents. And, and I, the, so when you, when you had these meetings, I'm not sure that, that the citizens in our town really were aware of them. I don't think there, there has been enough of a, of a survey of, of what, what they're, you know, of their feelings about all this. And I'm hoping that, you know, a lot of times, you know, citizens are, are way behind in this. Because, because I, I think the focus of your engagement has been with, with the, the Friendship Heights community itself, and also some of these community groups that are just, don't really, you know, their, their mission is to represent all these people, but, but they don't really communicate. For example, did, did you mean with the coordinating committee?
Yes, we absolutely do.
So the coordinating committee, which we are very intimately involved in, that now is, they, they don't, that, that organization doesn't really communicate very well with all of the citizens in, in those communities. So I, so one of the things I'm afraid of is that you're, so you're putting in this report pretty soon, right? So I'm afraid, I'm afraid that, that you're going to put out a report, and then people are going to say, why wasn't I consulting?
And you know what? That happens all the time. And I'm so happy for raising this.
I, I know it does. And so, for example, this presentation to us tonight is wonderful, and, and it's up to us to communicate this to our residents, to our citizens, to let them know. But I'm not sure that's happened with Chevy Chase Village.
Yes, we've been there too.
Chevy Chase, right. But I don't know how well that all those entities communicate with their citizens.
Well, so I'll, I'll say, our approach was, we reached out to all the municipalities, and actually also, I, I want to know how better to communicate with Somerset, because we've been reaching out since the, probably.
I understand. I know.
And I would love to know how better to connect with you guys. We haven't gotten here until now, and you're right. I don't, I'm sure we only heard from a hand, I know from the questionnaire, some people did say they live in Somerset. And I was happy about that, because I thought everybody saw the emails we sent.
I'm sure it's, yeah, so.
I think it was a small number, so I would love for them to hear.
The other thing, the other thing is, I don't understand, when they set up the governance of this, they only, they, they didn't really put in the governance leadership in all these surrounding communities. Because, because there's thousands of people that are impacted by this plan, not just the people that live in the Friendship Heights village and, and that era. And, and I've been involved with this for a long time, because 20 years ago, I was on the Friendship Heights Advisory Committee, which was a a partnership between DC and Montgomery County. So, so all I'm saying is, is that we, and, and, and it's, it's on us, I'm not putting it on you, I'm just asking the questions, but I think it's really on us to disseminate this information and to make sure that all of the interested citizens weigh in, so they don't come back and cause a problem when, when the final plans are, are decided.
And I will say, one of the great things about us doing a study now is this study doesn't actually recommend anything, and it's a great way to meet people and so that I can know how to contact different communities. So when we get to a future plan, where there actually is impact, we can really have that, have that intake. And I'll say, so for this study in particular, yes, of course, we met with the groups.
I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to be helpful to you. I'm not, you, you don't need, you, you don't, there's no need to, I, I, I've been in government before, I understand where, where, you know, how hard it is. I'm, I'm just saying that we want to be helpful to you to find the best way to disseminate the information so that comments are made. Because, you know, we have a, we have a highly educated, engaged citizenry that are going to, will want to get involved. So I really appreciate you being here tonight, and we will start circulating this.
You know, okay, so one way to get to us is to just send like a press release to our town manager, and he would get it out, because we do a weekly email to our residents.
I want Atara to be able to, this is Elsa Heisel McCoy, Chief Down County Planning. I, I know that you have a lot on the agenda, or other things on the agenda, and Atara's got some more slides. We, we've been reaching out to the, to the town manager, I think, since last year. And so I think, you know, having, if there are other additional folks on the town that we should be reaching out to, please send Atara the emails. We want to hear from you. We have been trying. We have not been successful till now.
I, we, you, I understand your frustration. We are in the same boat in many situations. And, I mean, I filled that out. I'm, I don't know how to, you know, fill it out. But we want, we want, our goal will be to have every citizen of our town fill that out. Because.
Done, so?
It's too late.
Is it too? They're done.
Could we, could we see? Again, just give my, this is just a study. And so I, there's no, so I, I think we heard, we would have loved to have heard from more folks. We do have, as Atara will, will get to, as she moves forward in the presentation, we have asked the council to add a Friendship Heights Sector Plan onto our work program to begin in the summer. And so we definitely, and that's where, you know, that's a multi-year process, and, you know, has the ability to make changes. So we definitely want to make sure that we learn from this opportunity and, and connect. But I'm going to suggest to Atara that she move on to this slide, and, and we'll keep going.
Before she moves on, one quick thing. If you really want to disseminate to all the communities around here, you could do that through the Citizens Coordinate, Citizens CCCFA. They will, they will get it out.
We've been to them.
They don't have, they don't have.
We've been to them twice.
That's all the citizens.
So, so we, we need, we need better contacts in the town of Somerset.
We want to help you. We, we.
And we would love the help.
We want to be helpful to you so that down the line, you have as much input from all these people as possible, because, because I've been in this game for decades, and, and I know, I know how to, and how hard it is.
And at the end of this presentation, there is a link to sign up for the Friendship Heights e-letter. And that is the most important thing, to get everyone's email, because that is the way for, the first thing we'll send out is when we're going to go to the planning board. But we will, when we start that sector plan engagement, obviously, we will start by going back to everybody we talked to. But that e-letter is going to be the main way we communicate with the community, in terms of sharing things, that's events and whatever. So that, I will forward you, you know, you guys will get that, and you'll be able to send it to everybody you know, and that will be awesome.
Now, we, another good thing, which I wish all the communities around here would do, is get on social media the way we have now. We're on all the, we're on all the social media outlets, so we can put it on all of them. And I wish every member of the CCC FH had the same kind of operation that we did and communicated.
Okay, since this is like a 20-minute presentation, I'm going to keep going, because I know you guys have other things to, to talk about besides this. And, and, you know, we're very upfront about how the engagement we did only reflects about maybe 200 to 300 people that we spoke to, and certainly not everybody who is a stakeholder in Friendship Heights. But we hope to grow that stakeholder group significantly during the sector plan, as Elsa said. So we ask people in the initial engagement questions about their relationship to Friendship Heights, and a little bit about their ident, how they identify with the downtown. So I'll talk about some of those takeaways. Then we're going to get into the urban side analysis, and how will we learn from that? So these are the top things people said they like about Friendship Heights. I think some of them are not surprising, right? The walkability of Friendship Heights, and the fact that people feel like it's a comfortable place to walk, that there's a lot of access to green space. People feel it's a friendly and welcoming place. Obviously, great access to transit, including the metro rail. So I, you know, we didn't, those for us were not super surprising. One of the more interesting exercises, I think, that we did is we asked people to describe Friendship Heights in three words, and this was a write-in, so you could say whatever you wanted. And we didn't limit you to three words in the box. So people wrote sentences, but most people tried to keep it to three or four words. The responses were really varied, from the positive to the negative, and everything in between. Forty percent of respondents used both positive and negative words in their answer, which we really feel points to some kind of dichotomy that needs to be studied, even in greater depth than we did here. This diagram, which is kind of a Venn diagram of sorts, right? It captures the words, a handful of words that we got, the ones that were most common. To the left in the green is the positive words, to the right in the orange are the negative words, and those words in the middle, sort of neither positive nor negative, sort of something that's maybe reflected a little bit of hope or potential. And we really thought this was interesting. And obviously, a lot of these responses don't have anything to do with urban design, but they gave us a sense of where the community is right now, or at least the people that we spoke to, which is what we can go on, and how they feel about their environment. And the fact that 40% of the respondents, across all kinds of age and sort of racial lines that we, you know, that we spoke to, lots of range of people, and yet we got a lot of this positive and negative in the same answer. So that was an important takeaway for us. I am going to add that we did collect demographic information from everyone who answered the questionnaire, and from many of the open house participants via an exit survey. In this presentation, I'm not going to get into that, because it just adds time. But in our final report, we're going to go through that in detail and compare it to the demographics of Friendship Heights overall. And in that situation, we are comparing it to the demographics of that study area, so people can see how it compares. It was not too far off, but there are some discrepancies, and that, we'll go into that in the report. Now I'll walk everyone through the urban design analysis and a summary of the engagement we did that relates to each network. The first thing we did was look at Friendship Heights kind of from a high level. Excuse me. Compared to the other Montgomery County downtowns. There are four downtowns in the county. People probably know, they used to be called central business districts, but that's an outdated zoning term, actually. So on these slides are what we call figure ground diagrams. And some of you may have seen this before, some of you may be new to them. It's a two-dimensional representation of an urban space that shows the relationship between the built and the unbuilt space. The black are the footprints of the buildings, and the white is everything else. We can compare sort of development patterns between the downtowns using these diagrams to some extent. Friendship Heights, the Maryland side, you've got like this white space that goes all the way around it, almost outlining it. And those are the green spaces, the wooded areas, and the parking lots on the Geico side and the collection side that separate Friendship Heights from the surrounding downtowns, including Somerset. Street patterns in the surrounding neighborhoods have zero correlation to the street pattern in the downtown. This is different from the other downtowns. Certainly, while there are dividing elements, the metro rail and Silver Spring going diagonally, the Wheaton Mall parcel cutting off that part of Wheaton from Kensington, when you look at the sort of southwest part of Wheaton. But on the other sides of these other downtowns, you can see streets that start in the center of the downtown and just make it smoothly out, even as the buildings change and the scale changes, they're much more interconnected with their surroundings. So that's one sort of difference that we observed when looking at it compared to the other downtowns in the region. It is, of course, much smaller. Wheaton and Friendship Heights are comparable in size, and they're both, you know, less than half the size of Silver Spring and Bethesda. Now, there is the four networks that we studied in detail, the pedestrian network, the transportation network, open space network, and the community amenities network. We completed six site visits, walking around the downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods, that were just focused on this network analysis. We visited many other times, we made lots of other observations while we were doing other engagement events. And then we asked questions, focused on each network. So we'll start with the pedestrian network. Overall, Friendship Heights, as we observed it, has a very strong pedestrian network. Sidewalks are continuous, they're everywhere. Many streets have a mature tree canopy. There are high-visibility crosswalks, all the state and county roads. And there are even some signalized mid-block crossings that we know have been put in in recent years, and they do seem to be used. And they are, seem to be in logical places. We did know that the Village of Friendship Heights has these brick-paver crosswalks, which might look nice, but they're actually not as highly visible, certainly when it's low light, and they may be slippery in the rain. So that was just one observation we made, versus the county ones that we see in this picture. The pedestrian network is great when you're inside the downtown, but when you want to walk from Friendship Heights to one of the surrounding neighborhoods, that is when it's a little bit tricky. Because of the buffer that surrounds Friendship Heights, there are very few connections between the downtown and the neighborhoods around it, as I'm sure everyone here is familiar with. And in some cases, they're so hard to find, you really have to know where they are. And I think, although it's not pictured here, the connection between Somerset and Friendship Heights on the trail from the pool is particularly, it's great if you can navigate that, but it would be challenging to find if you weren't familiar with it. And I think even to navigate it if you have any kind of mobility challenges. These two on the slide are the connections to the two other sides. This is the connection between the collection parking lot and Chevy Chase Village. Of course, there's this buffer park that goes almost the whole way with a wall, and that's the one connecting area. And on the other side of Brookdale, there is a wall or vegetation that's meant to be a barrier separating Geico from Brookdale, and there's one point of connection through the Brookdale Neighborhood Park. The next thing we looked at was street activation. So that is something that really contributes to a successful urban network, and street activation is one of those things that measures, it looks at how, how much interplay is there between the public realm, which we talked about earlier, right, and the ground floor, sort of zones, or those first two floors of the buildings on the street. Level of street activation can really contribute significantly to pedestrians' experience on that street. Streets in Friendship Heights can vary widely with regard to activations. Wisconsin Avenue in the two pictures on the left, it's quite. um, is quite active from the intersection at Western Avenue, pretty much up to South Park. Um, there are storefronts with colorful and engaging displays and plazas that are filled with seating and activity. Even though there are some vacant storefronts, of course, the general level of street activation is such that that, it makes that the dominant experience, at least today. But ground floor retail is not the only way to activate a street. North Park, two photos on the right, which is the main residential spine of the Village of Friendship Heights, has building entrances with canopies that reach the street. It has floors of windows and balconies facing the street, and there are terrace planted beds along much of that street. And in the summer and spring, of course, those are really beautiful, they're colorful, they're engaging. All of that helps to create an interplay between the buildings and the street. And so while it's not the same level as like a retail activation, it's still pretty good for, for sort of a residential street. However, there are several streets in friendship heights that I would say at the opposite end of the activation scale. Um, on the Hills Plaza and also on Willard, um, you have wide sidewalks and pretty decent tree canopy, even like you see on the picture on the left. But because friendship heights have a lot of above-ground parking podiums, you have a lot of long blank stretches of wall where those podiums exist. Uh, and walking along these, particularly when it's, there's not a lot of other people or it's dark, can be very isolating, uh, and certainly really just gives you a, just a real lack of a sense of activity. And I think that's something that, you know, people told us that they didn't like walking on Willard. And I, I, I wonder if one of, this is one of the reasons, there are probably numerous reasons. Um, and, and so it can be sort of unpleasant, even on a nice day and even with a nice tree canopy to walk next to these podiums. A lot of them have sort of the mechanical vents from the parking garages, and you can hear the fans uh, as you walk past them. The last observation we want to make is that there are many, many, many circular driveway entrances at numerous places in friendship heights that sort of interrupt the flow of pedestrian traffic. And yes, it makes sense in some cases if it's a hotel and they've got lots of drop-offs. Um, and then, you know, I know the residential apartment buildings, they also need drop-off. They have people who have mobility issues. But some of these drop-offs are very large, room for way more than one car. Um, and particularly in something like, if you look at the picture on the right of the Carlton, if you're walking on North Park on that um, sidewalk, you've got, it really gets disrupted. You've got to cross the driveway. It's quite a long way. And the sidewalk doesn't pick up again until the totally other end. And I think from the pedestrian perspective, although you've got the signage and the landscaping and the canopy that kind of pulls the building's attention to you as a pedestrian, sometimes that front door is like hard to see. Um, and there are, you know, just because it's so deep, because the driveway is so big. And that's something that friendship heights has in a lot of places, and it's just something to note in terms of understanding how it impacts the pedestrian experience. Now we're going to go through what we've heard about the pedestrian network in terms of our engagement, and we're not going through every single question that will be in the report. Just sort of a snapshot here. So as we saw earlier with the strengths of friendship heights, most of our respondents said walkability, one of the top strengths of the area. Um, they love walking here. A lot of people feel comfortable everywhere, but we heard from some respondents that there are, there are some safety concerns. There are some places where it's not quite well lit to cross safely. There are streets that just feel dark after it gets dark, that they're just, they're missing, you know, they feel like the street lighting is not sufficient to feel safe everywhere. People expressed concerns about cars speeding down Willard and Wisconsin. The next network we'll go to is the transportation network. So observations about the transportation network uh, is that, you know, it's very robust. There's a lot of options in friendship heights. You've got great access to metro rail, of course, which is very desirable in this region. You've got both Lamada buses from, that go to DC and Montgomery County ride-on buses that to go to the county. You're on a major north-south corridor in the region of Wisconsin Avenue, so you've got sort of easy access in terms of transit and metro up and down. And the Village of Friendship Heights operates a free shuttle, and that's shown with a light blue uh, route on the map. Um, they actually just started tracking ridership this year, so I, I didn't have any way to sort of opine on how many people take the shuttle, but it's a really great asset in that, you know, if you, if you can't walk safely, or you feel like, you know, it's hard for you to walk, whether all the time or sometimes in friendship heights, or it's raining, or you're carrying a lot of stuff, you've got some great options in terms of ways of getting around the village and getting out to the commercial area, and the village is still running their shuttle out to the Giant and West Bard a few times a week, uh, because with just Amazon Fresh and uh, Whole Foods, it's not necessarily enough. It's no standard grocery store, so to speak. So um, that's something they've been doing, which is also a great service. It is worth noting that there are no dedicated bike facilities built in friendship heights, and we'll talk in a minute about what we heard about that. Uh, there have been some planned, the twenty eighteen countywide bicycle master plan, and the report will include a map just to show that for context, although none have been realized as of yet. We asked people how they get around friendship heights, and then also how they get to and from friendship heights. Most people walk, and we even heard a lot about a lot of walking in terms of to and from, which we thought was great, considering what we thought were some challenging connection issues, but I think if you live there, you really know where you're going, then you use those connections, which is fantastic. Um, metro also really well-used in terms of how people get to and from friendship heights. Uh, people did tell us that they do move their car within friendship heights. Um, that was certainly higher than we expected, but um, as, you know, that was something interesting. We did not get a lot of respondents say that they use the friendship pipe shuttle, which is why we were curious about that. But hopefully in another year or so, that the village will have a year of ridership info that they'll share with us. And in terms of bicycles, we had, you know, less than ten percent, pretty much, just around ten percent, using bikes either within or coming and going. And I think part of that is because there is not a lot of facility to. There may also be a group that's just not, not big bikers. But we got a few comments from people who said they would love to bike more, and they take their bike and they go bike elsewhere because they don't feel safe coming and going from friendship heights because of the lack of separated bike facilities, and then it feels very unsafe to bike on uh, Wisconsin and Willard, and so they don't do it. So, um, I think that's something that, you know, will probably get explored more in the future. For the open space network, so there are a lot of parks and green spaces in friendship heights, and we looked at it through sort of the lens of ownership, just to understand how all these spaces came to be and who manages them. And also in terms of experience, which we'll talk about in a second. So, um, this map is looking at it from an ownership perspective, and I totally know that the green, they're not necessarily uh, showing up too differently, but in the report, we'll hopefully have, have that fixed. Um, basically you have three MNCPPC, a park and planning parks. At the periphery, you've got Western Grove and Brookdale and Willard Avenue. And you've got the green areas owned by the various municipalities. So you've got the wooded area that's owned by Somerset, and you have Hubert Humphrey owned by the village, and then you have the green area, the buffer park um, at the border between Chevy Chase Village and friendship heights, and that's owned by Chevy Chase Village. And then you've got some what we call privately owned publicly accessible spaces, often done during private development. So Willoughby Park and this park at Wisconsin Place are examples. And then you have other sort of privately owned green spaces that are not officially public accessible, publicly accessible, but are used by people like the Geico lawn, which we'll talk about in a minute. So this is in terms of experience, and I'm not going to get into this now. We'll get into this more in the report, but you know, these spaces are sort of designed in ways that they offer a range of experiences, which is a real strength of the area. You know, Hubert Humphrey in the middle is kind of designed for social interaction, activated by a community center. You've got the wooded area and the trails in sort of the Somerset wooded park. You've got active recreation opportunities in Willard Avenue Neighborhood Park and Brookdale Neighborhood Park. Got a nice contemplative space over in Western Grove. So it's a real mix of, of, of activities, which we think is really, really a strength. And then you've got plazas. So the plazas are, the large ones are Bloomingdale's and the plaza at the collection. I'm sure everyone here uh, also is aware of sort of how empty um, Bloomingdale's Plaza is on a regular basis. Even though the owner of that plaza has tried to activate it with plants and furniture and more furniture and shading structures, just seems to really struggle, probably part of that is the construction across the street, part of it is just the retail, uh, and whether it's actually attracting people who are going to hang out in that plaza. The plaza at the collection is a little bit more successful, probably because people use it as a cut through to the parking, which is part of what it's, what its goal is. And I think uh, it's just much smaller scale, and we do sometimes see people in our observation sitting there, although it is, it is empty quite a bit as well. So in terms of what we heard, we asked a number of questions about parks and public spaces. Again, more of this will be in the report. So, um, you know, Hubert Humphrey Park was listed as one of the most visited, and that wasn't surprising, and it also just may reflect that we had a lot of Village of Friendship Heights respondents. But one of the surprises for us was that the fourth most used open space according to these respondents in friendship heights in the downtown is the Geico lawn. Definitely not a park, sort of tacitly uh, allowed for community use by Geico. They don't tell you not to use it, and they're okay if people are using it. So it happened. And so we've got a lot of responses from people who said they go there on the weekends with their dogs, with their kids, or just to sort of enjoy the shade. And so that, that was a interesting takeaway for us in that obviously Geico is giving friendship heights something that they don't have in one of the more sort of normal parks, and that's something for, uh, for everyone to keep in mind. When we, people sometimes said they visited a park or they didn't visit a park, and we asked sort of what do you visit regularly, or sometimes or not at all. In the not at all category, the most common reason why people didn't visit because they didn't know where it was located. And this applied to parks across, you know, across the whole list. Um, although I think Western Grove was one of the more common places that people just didn't know, didn't know where it was, didn't know how to get there. They weren't even familiar with the park at all. And the last network we looked at was that of community amenities. So community amenities is a wide-ranging topic, but we wanted to just get a sense of it, and it really can include any neighborhood services and features that enhance the quality of life in a given area. And it's grocery stores and restaurants and retail, also, you know, neighborhood serving retailer, dry cleaners and hair salons or nail places. It can include civic resources like rec centers and libraries or medical facilities like, you know, doctors offices and urgent care and pharmacies. Also arts, entertainment, theaters or museums also would be an amenity for a community, even public art. So all of those kind of contribute to the quality of life in that, that, you know, that one has in a community. We observed that, you know, friendship heights has many of these, also missing many of these. They really, you know, you comparing it to a larger urban area like Bethesda or Silver Spring where they may have more amenities, but they're also so much bigger with so many more people. Um, you know, so that uh, just is something to weigh when we look at this, these kinds of comparisons. We do have some, you know, rec center here, county rec center and the village community center, both with lots of programming, hearing to lots of different types of people. Whole Foods is probably one of the top destinations in friendship heights, followed closely by the doctor's offices that are there. We noted a lot of independent pharmacies, although we didn't see any chain pharmacies that are sort of, have wider hours. And of course, there's a lot of friendship power, public arts, excuse me, in friendship heights, and some really interesting and notable. And that definitely enhances the public realm, you know, when, when you see that everywhere.
Tara, I have a quick question about the amenities. Um, do you, and may, maybe this part of the study didn't, maybe you weren't thinking about, about this, but do you think that the, the new, the heights uh, development, that, that, that space there? Do you think that that has any impact on um, the way that the community will use that space?
So I think that's a great question. When we were doing our analysis, the heights hadn't opened yet. We stood outside that door many times.
Right.
Herein. And now we have to go back and visit it, I think, to sort of weigh that. It's definitely an amenity, right? I mean, we talked about retail restaurants are definitely amenities, and to my next point is about what amenities people liked most in friendship heights. At the moment, the height wasn't open yet, so we didn't really talk about that. Um, but one of the, what the, the amenities people name the most are the restaurants. Um, actually particularly goes with outdoor eating areas like Clyde's, one of the most popular ones to mention, and also Leah's. And those both happen to be restaurants that have like sizable, like sort of lovely outdoor eating opportunities. Um, and so I don't know, it'd be interesting to sort of, you know, I'm sure we will circle back to some of these questions again, whenever we get to that sector plan, hopefully, and in fiscal year twenty-five. And it'll be interesting to see if the heights comes up as something. And also I, I would mention, and I think this is something that Somerset folks are certainly aware of because it connects to the, almost to that trail that connects the two communities. Page Park was closed during this entire study. So, um, we noted in the report and we talked about some things that we heard about it, but we couldn't really observe anyone in it or how people were using it at the time when we did the study. So I just want to make sure just because I know people are aware about that park, and, and that fact that it has been closed. And so we sort of note that unfortunately, we, we couldn't really take stock of that. And I think similarly with the heights, it was under construction the whole time. Um, and I, I hope to find out that people are using it. It's certainly a new kind of creative use for that space, and I guess we'll just have to see. I, I think it definitely counts as an amenity, you know? I mean, something like that is certainly an amenity. So as we expected, right? Because friendship heights has some amenities, but not, you know, nearly everything. People enjoy the ones that are in friendship heights, but they also leave to access virtually, you know, every category of amenity. Um, you know, there were some things that people brought up in the comments in the questionnaire, you know, in specific. So, and I'll just highlight a few of those. So people noted actually the lack of a chain pharmacy, which we noted in our observations, and that there used to be a CVS nearby, but it closed. And, you know, I think that, that can be frustrating for people. They also noted um, the lack of sort of anything to do, you know, for sort of an arts and culture. You know, at all, like place to see a movie or, or something, or, or anywhere to see any kind of art. I think that was, um, something people noticed, something that they wished they had in their own community. And there was also a few comments about how they left friendship heights for retail because the retail in friendship heights was too high-end, and they were hoping, you know, they noticed a lack of affordable retail in their own community, and that they spent time leaving friendship heights to find more affordable retail. One of the things, though, I think about friendship heights, and we heard this in the comments as well, is that even though people can't find what they want all the time in friendship heights, because of the, they're on Wisconsin. And so whether they're going to drive or they're going to take transit, it's very easy to access DC, Bethesda, Rockville, and on that corridor, you can get all of these things. Um, and so people felt that even though there were maybe some things they wished they had in friendship heights, they didn't feel like it was hard to access what they needed. And then we thought that was kind of an important point. So I'm going to close with um, some lessons learned, because again, we're not making recommendations. We're just identifying strengths and challenges, um, which will hopefully inform our future work. And you know, one of the great things about doing a study like this is that, first of all, we got to meet a lot of the community um, in this kind of more flexible and kind of interesting study where we just want to hear about people's experiences. It was great to get to know people that way, to get to know the community that way. Um, and to find out about, you know, to sort of be aware and then figure out, right, how to reach more people, because we know we only reached a small segment in this initial effort. So here are some of the things we learned about friendship heights that we thought were real strengths, real assets. So easy access to lots of modes of transit and obviously including the metro rail station. Everywhere in the downtown is like a ten-minute walk to the metro, so that's, or less, which is fantastic. A strong and safe pedestrian network with a great tree canopy, so it's pretty comfortable to walk everywhere in friendship heights, also great. Variety of green spaces throughout the downtown. Lots of shaded areas to rest and sit down. I think very important for our community, where you have a high population of seniors. And there are also large outdoor areas for community events. If they're going to happen in friendship heights, there's a place to have those. And there's a strong active retail corridor on Wisconsin, which is holding on. And I know this study did not talk about the economic realities of friendship heights. Um, and that is something that will be covered in a sector plan, but everyone should know that we do. We were very in touch with the Friendship Heights Alliance and a lot of other groups. Who did talk to us about that, even though it wasn't really germane, but we talked about sort of how public realm is important for the success and sometimes how that ties in. So we, we covered a lot of that in our conversations, but we're keeping the, the takeaways focused on, on urban design for this study. And then here are things that we think are sort of what we're calling. Yeah, this is my last slide.
It's been the last that's going on for. I'm sorry, we have like, this has been really interesting. I think maybe we need to schedule some more time at our next work session.
This is my last slide, actually. And so we can finish and then we can, we can get into that. Thanks. Um, so these are our areas for further study. Um, basically the fact that there's a, a challenge with the connecting the downtown to the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, you know, public parks with active recreation, but they're at the periphery and people said they were hard to get to, or they never got to them. And so while we think all those opportunities are there, there's some kind of connection issue perhaps. Um, the safety issues I mentioned, that people mentioned about pedestrian safety, not enough lighting on streets, et cetera, speeding cars. And the fact that there's a great pedestrian network, but um, there are some challenges with it, which is, you know, that there's um, you have bikes and pedestrians, like in this picture, sharing the sidewalk, so there's nowhere for the bikes to go. And also a lot of curb cuts and a lot of um, buildings designed to privilege the automobile. So how to reconcile that with a great pedestrian network and keep it safe will be another question. That is the end of all the takeaways. I already talked about this stuff, so we can skip to this slide. This is my email, my phone number. This is the website of the study. There is very little on it other than a place to sign up for the e-letter, which is the absolute best way to maintain a connection with this study and any other friendship heights work going forward. All work that we do about friendship heights will, will go to that e-letter. So if we do get started with a sector plan and the council does approve that, when they approve the budget, which we won't find out until April or May. But with, with, if that, if all that does happen, that would be the group we would start with, whoever's on that e-letter. Um, and so I really encourage, to the point we talked about earlier, be able to sign up for that. Um, we don't send really any emails except for friendship heights related updates, and they're, they're few and far between, but they're important. And that's really the best way to stay kind of on top of, of what we're doing. And.
I want to throw out one parting question. It has been a very interesting presentation, but I, I don't think you can talk about friendship heights without talking about friendship heights DC as well. And I understand that you're only based in Maryland, but friendship heights DC is literally across the street from friendship heights Maryland. The major drugstore was in DC, it's closed now. Major movie theaters were in DC, and the folk in friendship heights Maryland used, of course, that drugstore and used that movie theater, and they're upset that they're gone, understandably, but they were in DC. So, and similarly, the stores and restaurants in DC add to the stores and restaurants in Maryland, so it's a bigger urban area than is implied by just the Maryland side. How are you handling that?
So that's a great question. So that's a great question, and I didn't talk about it because I was trying to get through this. I know you guys have always have to talk about, but we, we have been working in close partnership with the DC Office of Planning. And as I said, they just released a Wisconsin Avenue Development Framework Plan, a draft that was out for public comment. I think that period closed, but it was out there for several months. We were, we, we were following that project the whole time. We went to some of their meetings. And so, you know, they're planning their own future for that Wisconsin Avenue corridor. And we are very aware of what they're looking at.
But, but you're working with the Friendship Heights Alliance, aren't you?
Yes, and we absolutely are. And as, as the DC people.
The Friendship Heights Alliance was created between the DC Council and the County County Council. So they're just the one part of it. So I think they're working very closely, that's why she brought up.
Yes.
We should all, we should, I think that's a very good point, because we should provide the information to our residents about what is going on in the DC side, because we have the ability to comment there too.
Yes, and they have a lot that, that I would urge everyone to look up. It's called Wisconsin Avenue Development Framework.
Because I actually have commented, I, I'm on some mailing list to comment on the DC side. And it's not only for, for DC residents. They're soliciting comments from the Maryland side. So that, that plan you're talking about, I've commented on too. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for writing us.
Our pleasure. We look forward to finding that in the future.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Very interesting. I think the rest of the agenda is overcome by events. And I think we can do some dialogue with town staff to collect some data to inform the police and security program. To hear some concerns about the anti-Semitism resolution.
I'm wondering, since we're obviously not going to talk about that tonight, if it's possible, I can arrange to bring somebody in to talk and give us 10 minutes of why we should have an anti-Semitism.
Stand alone.
Stand alone, just to give some facts and figures that are pretty startling out there.
Well, we can do that, we can do that. The intent of this agenda item was discussed how it would be before, remember, he introduced the anti-Semitism resolution. But we all were, there are some, one citizen brought up the idea that it should be all encompassing. So, but we can defer this to the next one.
Okay, because I, I talked it up a bit. Yeah, my next work session.
Yeah, I mean, I had some suggestions about the resolution too, so, I mean, we, we do need.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's not ready to come.
Somebody just give us some perspective on, on, on anti-Semitism, some of the facts and figures going on in this county, which are startling.
No, I, I am aware of that. It's, it's appalling, it is. It's, I think we can have a better resolution.
We'll, we'll go.
But are we going to talk about the police program and like, are we?
Now we decided that, we haven't got time to do it now, do we? I mean, it's.
I think we have to.
I mean, I feel like it's kind of, you know, we're getting just emails on top of, or at least I am.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, I think that Kumar's article, multiple articles, has really kind of spoken the neighbors.
Yes.
I think we need a good amount of time to talk about that and flesh that out and not just rush through. Because I think it's really important.
Right. So we need more than, what, what I was thinking, and maybe we have just like two, three minutes here to provide some direction to the town staff to get information for this. Because in my communications with the, with the folks, safety committee, we are, the ladies on board, they've indicated there, there are some topics that they're looking for town staff support and getting information. I think that we'd like to, just, just like you were very helpful on, like Golden Heights. I think we need to get some information on. What do other towns have? Do they have any additional police or other security support? What's the scale of it? What are some of the other options? Do we have any sense of cost for private security programs? And this might be very preliminary, but just some data to, to better inform discussion. Otherwise, it's just.
Maybe a note to your colleagues around to the other towns. What do they pay? How many hours? That kind of stuff. You have some of that, right?
I have some of that, yeah. I can help, I can help package it and sort of flesh it out for you more.
I, I also think, and I don't know, like, if we have this or whatnot, but I think that maybe if we could do like a postmortem look on like when the police are here. And because my understanding is that they're 13 hours a week, right?
Yeah, roughly.
And then when, or do they patrol overnight? Do they patrol during the day? Like when, are they here in just two chunks? Are they here in five days a week? I don't really know. Do you guys know? Maybe I'm missing something.
It varies. I mean, in, in general, just speaking very broadly, Officer Alcott is usually here during the day. So you might see him, I mean, it could be morning through afternoon. And I think Sergeant Chung is more likely to be here in the evening. And that's, you know, that, that's usually the overnight hours, you know, around midnight at that time. But it can be, you know, as early as six o'clock, something like that.
I think that, I think that it would be helpful to get, you know, like, at least for our residents to know, and I guess me apparently, on when, you know, I mean, are they here? Because there's a lot of, I feel like there is a lot of residents who do say that they see the police a lot. And, you know, at various stops here and there. But, you know, 13 hours out of 24 times seven, whatever that is.
7.9% of time.
Yeah, yeah, 7.9% of the time. But it would be interesting to know, like, do the police come every day and stay for an hour? Or do they come in two chunks and stay for multiple hours? I don't know.
Are you asking right now or do?
Oh, yeah, I mean, however we track it, you know? But to get like, I mean, it doesn't have to be exact or anything like that. But just, you know, like a, a day in the life of the officer, or a week in the life of the officers. And when are they here and where do they go? I think would be helpful to also gather so that everyone is kind of educated as to when they're here.
Right.
Because I know there's a lot of people that think that, you know, they might be here a lot overnight in the nighttime hours. And, you know, it's really maybe one, one day a week.
Right.
And I'm wondering if maybe we should put out a survey. We've gotten a lot of, of emails when you have the, the Sarah List serve, you know, responses, but that's not good enough. It's something, you know, maybe it's a short survey, you know, and I think people might come out for it.
Well, well, another thing that, I, 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 another thing that's come up multiple times is the tra, the traffic stops and speeding. And I don't have a great sense, I, I don't have a great sense yet. I mean, I, I could, I could email them, for example, and say, hey, we have talked, what we really want is to crack down on speeding. Can you guys for the next two weeks?
Right.
Just, just that be on the lookout for stop sign violations and speeding violations. But I don't know if that's what we want to do yet. And maybe, maybe we don't know if that's what we want to do, if that's what you're saying.
I don't know. Maybe that's why we have to wait.
I mean, I think that.
Sorry, the issue is though, that they're not here enough to have a major effect on that, because they're only here 13 hours a week. And so that, that's my struggle, actually, that we're spending 50,000 on them. Could we spend 50,000 on other things that would give us more security than the police officers are giving us? And the answer to, I'm getting to think is yes, we could, and we'd be more secure. That's.
The only thing I would say too about like, yeah, and I, I think that with the survey, you know, people have a lot of opinions that are not necessarily based in fact. And so, you know, the survey might get a lot of, you know, just feelings about the police negative or positive. I mean, you know, there's just a lot that could come out. I mean, I find that the people who are engaged are the ones that are reading the articles and are writing letters to people. And we've seen it on both sides, right? We've seen pro the police presence and we've seen negative. I don't know that a survey would, to me, I don't know that a survey would tell us anything. Maybe, you know, that the data and the facts that we're seeing haven't shown us. You know, there's been no tickets issued.
One thing I think that a survey could be helpful for is to help guide what, what do we want out of our security program? Is it to cut down on stop, you know, stop signs and speed? And then, then that can lead into either, well, are the police the best solution for that? Or do we look at stop sign flashing lights? Do we look at speed radar flashers or, you know, things like that? Or is it, I'm nervous about people breaking in at night? Or I'm nervous about people stealing my catalytic converter? And then, then we can say, okay, well, what are, what are our best solutions to solve those things? That would just be my thought in terms of a survey. But I also take your point that.
I mean, people are going to say, I want all of that. And then it's going to cost $2.4 million to hire our own police. See if Chevy Chase Village wants to lend us some, I guess.
We, we have got the, what crime we have with their own police force.
Exactly. No, and I mean, according to the data that the Public Safety Committee has done, they actually have more crime than we have.
Right. And they have a whole.
How many holes do they have?
Yeah, I think when you divide by the number of people, it comes out to about the same magnitude.
But I mean, it is interesting when you do look at the data that's been provided, because, you know, I, like, Kumar's like point of view about, you know, that if, if, if ca, if police presence was the, you know, a catalyst to neighborhood safety, then like DC would be the safest place, you know, on earth, because they have so many police. But we all know that that, not, it doesn't deter crime necessarily, so it's interesting.
And especially after they're just getting in the police car.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So that, that turned into a more discussion than. I'm sorry, we just had some great presentations. Well, so I'm looking forward to having, carving out a much bigger chunk of time to really dig into this topic at the next work session. And if any of the council members have thoughts or recommendations, or even just questions they'd like us to explore in that agenda, I think, please send them to Matt and myself and the mayor.
And what requests for information.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So, so, so we'll try to prepare, lay the groundwork for us to have an effective.
The same with the chair and, and ask.
And our next meeting is February 20th.
I am not going to be able to be here.
Can you zoom in?
I'm going to be on a plane back from Mexico.
We'll pay for you to buy the on-air.
Maybe, maybe we can adjust the, the meeting date. Not that, maybe you're looking for.
Schedule my flight.
We, we're going to be scheduling the budget hearings and maybe we can switch a budget hearing for.
Oh, yeah.
So, but I don't, I want to that tonight, but Councilor Kumar isn't here. So we're going to be, we're going to be scheduling these budget meetings soon. So we'll, because we've done that before, switch a, a work session.
We'll talk to her. So, yeah. Sorry, Kumar, have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Sounds last night, friends off.